I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to call roll call?
Counselperson Brenney.
Aye, he is here.
Counselperson Bruning. Counselperson Perry.
Yes, yes, sir.
Counselperson Hanson. Counselperson McGinty.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the three of you that are here tonight. I thank you for coming, and invite you to make comments on the agenda as the items are shown. And tonight, item number five is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. So we will move forward with number two. Do any of you have any conflict of interest of any of the items on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three, consent agenda. A, approval of agenda. B, approval of the minutes of the February 10th, 2015 council meeting. C, renewal license, uh, how do you say that, Gary?
Dollcorp.
Dollcorp, LLC, doing business as Dollar General. Number 6620, Class C beer permit, Class B wine permit with Sunday sales. Is there any discussion around that? Any questions?
Keep going.
Oh, excuse me, yes. D, renewal license for Marlboro. Doing business as SAC liquor store, Class E liquor license with Sunday sales. E, consideration of accepting Taylor Steinkamp's resignation. F, consideration of hiring a laborer one and two. G, consideration of appointing Jan Sessford and Jim Geary to the planning and zoning board. H, consideration of appointing Rochelle Crump and Brent Dre to the SAC City Hometown Pride Committee. And I, receipts and disbursements. Now we'll have comments, questions, discussion over any of those, if there is any. None?
There was no passage of consent agenda. I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. If there is no further discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Item number four, public hearings. A, this is the time and place for the public hearing on proposed plans and specifications, form of contract bids, and estimate of cost for the SAC City facade project. Adam, have you had any written?
No.
Any oral?
No.
Are there any questions? Is there any discussion this evening?
Uh, maybe just, maybe just a couple things. Looking at, um, so that's basically all of the materials out there are the materials that are applicable to this. Is that right?
Correct, yeah. And we asked Fred to be here from Agent 12, so if there were any questions, he could answer any that...
All right, so is the, uh, maybe just a couple more clerical things. That stack, sorry, it's thick.
Yeah, I've got it.
You've got it. Um, on the substitution procedures, we probably want to list it as SAC City Main Street instead of Lamar's Main Street. I would guess.
Yeah.
And, um, on the glazing materials, there's another spot where it says we're supposed, it looks like it's a form, it says insert requirements, but nothing's inserted for the glass requirements. Should those be included also?
Um, there's glass specs in, they're in there somewhere. I guess you're really picky on glass.
I guess what I'm looking at is here where it just kind of says glass. It certainly looks like it'd be hard. Okay, um, it looks like, it looks like it's something that didn't quite get filled in that maybe should be there. And this was, I guess, the other.
Did you pull it out of that one?
I copied them up there.
Oh, okay, okay.
And this is where I got those.
Yep.
Probably, yeah.
Yep. I'll let him know.
Fred, do you have anything to add? Have anything at all for us this evening?
No, just don't let it snow.
Okay.
You know, I, I do, you know, and Bruce has alluded to, or I won't say alluded to it, he's actually mentioned it, like where the glazing materials are and when somebody's filling these out, and I'm talking about the Franks Group, you know, and there are things left, left out where glass, see, insert requirement, you know, to me, it just shows lack of detail in the same way when you, when they put on one of the sheets that Bruce just showed Fred, you know, it's got CDBGG Lamar's Main Street facade rehabilitation project. And then down at the bottom, it has SAC City Franks, or SAC City facade rehabilitation, the Franks Group, PC. It just, to me, indicates lack of detail. And I was just up looking at the, you know, plans up there. You know, and I, and I look at those drawings, you know, and it's, you know, a detailed drawing should, you know, proposed, you know, thing that a contractor's going to bid on. You would say, you know, when you're looking at construction blueprints and so on, they're, they're just replete with, with details and so on. And this is really all it just, you know, if I was going to say, how would you summarize all the different projects on the facade project? I would say, after having gone throughs, it's more or less paint and recaulk and rehabilitate, placards that are already there, uh, tuck point, mild light, strong tuck point. Really, you could summary, summarize each one in about two or three sentences. And a few, they do have new windows and so on, but lack of specificity there. I mean, just the lack of detail. You know, I'll say to the public meeting, I, I'm, I'm, the Franks Group scares me. You know, this, we've got 750,000 some odd dollars towards this project. And I look at what they've come up with, and I just say, if I were them, I would be ashamed of myself. I really would. I mean, this, this, to say in a public meeting, I think that's probably the time and place to say, this is the hearing. We have no choice but to go ahead. I understand that. The Franks Group has backed us into this corner, and I think it's a...
But the one assurance I would give you, Bill, and you heard in the meeting as I did, we spoke with Manning, and the feeling was is that, two points I'll make out of that conversation with Manning was that, one was that the, um, that they went with the same level of detail in their application, and they felt successful. Why, they didn't meet their aggressive schedule, they felt successful in their project. And the second one is, is that they, their feeling was is they were happy with the work provided by the architectural firm, that they would employ them again to do the architectural work for another project.
They're going to employ them again.
Correct. And that was, that was their intent.
In the meeting that Adam's referring to, this was a conference call that Steve Spots, who's the chair of the committee, Adam, Barb, and I sat on, and, you know, and, yeah, and that was a little reassuring to hear, you know, Don, this was a conversation with Don Rol, who's the city administrator with Manning. So that, that was a little reassuring. But it's still vetting on the come and, you know, hoping for the best without much specificity. And that, and that does concern me. I'd, I hope, I hope the Franks Group, and, you know, if you can communicate that to them, Fred, that I sure hope that he's going to start to wow us because he has not. And I, you know, I hope that doesn't irritate him and set him off in a wrong tone, which has been, you know, his, you know, I just hope, I just hope that it goes well going forward. With that, I will vote for it. We have no choice.
I'll ask him about those two things first thing tomorrow.
I guess one other question I had, there are like four projects in here that they have a, the subprojects is covered by lump sum allowance. What, can somebody, I, not being a contract person, can you, what are we talking about in this lump sum allowances and how is that right?
Do you want to take that, Frank?
They put that in there if, um, usually has to do with discovery items that we think this is it, but we don't know till we get into it. And so they just have an allowance to bid for that. And, um, and I've seen it for things like, on old Manning, they had a railing that was, what was it, an old basement, um, entrance to a basement that was on the sidewalk. And it had been boarded up for years, but they wanted to make it look more historical fabric. So they put like a lump sum allowance in there for a railing, but at that time, the owner wasn't sure what they wanted to do. So they just came up with a, with an amount to plug in there. So at least the contractor has something to bid.
Okay. I mean, do we feel that, I mean, looking at the preliminary project schedule, do we feel that 150 days after the notice to proceed to substantial completion is realistic?
Yeah.
Fred, can you address...
Unless you run into, um, you run into some structural issues, and which can take some time to deal with, maybe those on buildings or...
And to address that a little farther, maybe, uh, maybe Fred can, can confirm this. In the case of Manning, where they ran significantly over the timeline for the project, one, they were being very aggressive with their timeline expectations from the beginning. And two, when they got, they did some significantly involved structural work on several of the buildings. And, and if you compare their project to our project, I think with the exception of possibly two buildings in our project, very few of them are having that lead, that detail where we're actually pulling the entire front off of a building and restoring the entire front of the building.
Yeah, and then Manning had a problem with the glass subcontractor, who we will assume on any of these projects here. And there's a holdup there with, with, it was basically a two-man operation. And there's holdups there. But if things go well, 150 days is reasonable. But then again...
So what is our timeframe to be done with this to actually meet the grant requirements?
We have until, oh...
You know the official day.
July, around July 2016 is the end of the CDBGG contract.
Which with not knowing when you could break ground at the beginning of next spring, that could leave you a window as short as two months. And that's even to clear up anything that might have been left over that we don't foresee today. So I think it's, it behooves us to try to have the project done and focus on getting the project done by the end of this year.
No, no, I, I, I'm 100% on board. I mean, I'm just, I, I'm not trying to be critical. I'm just, I'd rather ask the questions upfront than, than say, well, why didn't I think of that and ask it later? You know, and that's, you know, that's, I, I noticed there are a couple places, there's some permits that says that the contractor's responsible, and some that says the permits are waived. I'm assuming there really aren't any construction permits for the city, looking at the scope of what's here?
Yeah, if you really, from the perspective of like P&amp;Z, I can't think of any of the projects off the top of my head, and that's without reviewing each one of them, Bruce, that have elements that would require a permitting process. The, um, and technically, in this project, since they are, the city has ownership in a pseudo way of the portions of the property being improved, it's technically the city that would be, would, would techni, that's why it qualifies for the federal grant, is they're pseudo-city owned during that period.
What cities have done, at least in my projects, is they just did one, one all-inclusive construction permit, and just listed all the properties on it, did it that way.
I mean, I just, it was, there were a couple different, are there other permittings that would be needed beyond?
Uh, we wouldn't have anything associated with DNR. We wouldn't have anything associated with, I can't think of anything.
It's probably just general language that's in all, yeah.
I mean, I assumed that was the case, but, you know, when you assume, you know what happens.
Okay, let's have a...
You have to.
I have a question. Can you stand?
Steve, Gary, two things. As a concerned businessperson downtown, I, as you all know, I have pulled out of the facade project because of my feelings with the Franks Group. I kind of go along with Bill. I don't think enough information is there. Being in construction for 40 years and bidding projects, especially grant projects, we always had a very detailed set of blueprints, plus a booklet of specifications with all details and everything involved with that. Basically, my questions are tonight, have we passed the SHIPPLE program? And have we sent bid packs out already?
Yeah, bid packs can be sent out after tonight, and the SHIPPLE submitals went in a week ago Friday, and they've been reviewed by IEDA, Ann Schmidt was really helpful. And she's sent them, I think last Friday, Thursday, Friday afternoon, she told me she located them, and they're off to SHIPPLE. She's going to hand deliver them either Thursday or Friday. It was Thursday.
So, okay, they are off to SHIPPLE, or SHIPPLE has approved them?
SHIPPLE has them. They're in the review process.
Okay.
What that means is, um, we can't do any contract awards or anything until the SHIPPLE is completed.
Okay, so they just left the Franks Group, or where were they shipped from to?
He sent the final design to me, and then I had all the other SHIPPLE documents in a folder for each property. So then I just inserted the final design and sent it in Ann Schmidt. She reviews it before it goes to SHIPPLE.
Will you tell them a little bit about who she is, so they understand that first?
Um, she's a historical consultant that works for Iowa Economic Development Authority. And she started, I think she started about the time when they got involved with the DTR. And she's kind of a buffer to make sure everything is done correctly before it goes to SHIPPLE.
Okay.
So things don't get held up.
How long does SHIPPLE have?
30 days. They have 30 days. Um, if they would come to us and say, we're up to the 30 days, we're not done reviewing, we give us an extension. As a city, you applicant, you don't have to, but you might pay, you might pay for it, and I might pay for it down the road on the next project. But they've been between right at 30 and maybe to 45 days. But again, most of these are not as intensive as like Manning and Adele, projects I have there, that I don't think will take as long to review.
Pete's indication to me in our last communication was that the feeling was that there was, since there is not a historic district and historic integrity in most of the buildings, that he believed the turnaround would probably be less than 30. His feeling was, he thought it might even be less than 30 days.
I know SHIPPLE has been swamped with, I, I know they have been crazily swamped. The only other question I really had, this is talking about a summary of, of construction stuff. And it basically is talking about how the fact that the building is partly done, the owner, which could be the city, which probably is actually the business owners, can, can begin to occupy it, which is great. On occupancy, the owner will assume responsibility for maintenance and cleaning up of accepted work. Who accepts the work?
In the end, the city would accept the work.
And is, I mean, so is this something that the architect will be approving before the city accepts?
They make a, just like with an engineering firm on other projects, Bruce, at some point in the project, the architect will notify us that they believe we have met significant completion, and will recommend to the council that they, that they accept the project under the terms of significant completion. Of course, that does not mean the project's done. That just simply means that you've met the definition of significant completion. Then you'll go into the punch list process before you do the final payout.
I guess, but as, in the individual buildings, if people begin to resume the area, how, are we going to give them permission to go back into that part of the building? Or how does that work?
One thing we really have not discussed yet, and this is something you would, of course, want to do during the pre-construction phase, once we knew who the contractor is, is first, we need to find out how they plan on doing the properties. Because, I mean, obviously, if they're going to do, um, you could have stages of situations where parts of the project or locations could be completely done, and others are still in a stage of being worked on. So I, I think knowing what the prog, the process that the contractor plans to use will dictate to us how that process will work, Bruce.
Okay, they'll do it a little differently.
Yeah.
The two that I've worked with. And then they kind of go, we had a situation in Adele where a building we really wanted to be in the program, and, but it was a person who was retiring, and wasn't going to put a lot of money into it. But then she found a buyer, and the buyer said, yeah, do it all. I want it to look like that. And, um, so that was kind of a priority, to get that one done. And then we have another one that's a, kind of a sports bar, and they're big into the bicyclists. And so that's kind of a second priority because of what they've got going on. That contractor likes to do just maybe two or three at a time, and that's how he's going to do it. Whereas one in Manning, pretty much did all the demo at once.
Yeah, staged it.
Did all the windows at once as they came in. Tried to sequence the windows and the doors with the order timeline. So that's something we discuss at pre-construction.
If there are no further questions or discussion, I'd call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. I'd call for a vote, please.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Okay, you have the resolution.
Thank you. Item four, public hearing number one is consideration of resolution number 2015-04 entitled, finally, thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally approving and confirming proposed plans and specifications, form of contract bids, and estimate of cost for the SAC City facade project.
Compared to everything else that's landed on the desk, that's pretty short.
I would move passage of resolution number 2015-04 entitled, finally approving and confirming proposed plans and specifications, form of contract bids, and estimate of cost for the SAC City facade project.
So I second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution number 2015-04 entitled, finally approving and confirming proposed plans and specifications, form of contract bids, and estimate of cost for the SAC City facade project. If there's, is there any further discussion or any further questioning?
No.
If not, I'd call for a vote.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number five, is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Are there any this evening? If not, we move on to item number six, which is continuing business, A, Blue Space. Did you hear back from them, by the way?
Yes, I did. I got an email back from Nick today. And he, I asked him two questions in my email. The first question, well, I pretty much told him what our predicament was. And then I asked him if they had a recommendation, and why they were making the recommendation they were. Um, Nick's response to those two questions was, in their preference, they preferred option one. And their explanation of why they liked option one is they believed it was more going with the Americana theme, the historic Americana theme that they were suggesting, and that they believed it was in, and I'm...
Paraphrasing.
Paraphrasing here. They believed it was a better designed emblem as a presentation piece than the second option was. And that was, because I told them that it seemed that we were down to option one or option two, and asked them what they would prefer. So their preference was for option one.
That was the Chamber.
No, that was Blue Space.
Chamber prefers option two.
For any council member who has not heard, last Tuesday, Chamber looked it over, and in the end, their recommendation was to move forward on option two. Their explanation, primarily from what I understand, on why they preferred option two, was that the building structures in the design were more realistic of our downtown than the structure within the emblem of number one. At least, that's the way it was explained to me by the Chamber president.
Well, if, if they, that could be cleaned up a little bit on option one, if that could be talked about, I believe we paid Blue Space a bunch of money to have their expertise. And if they came back with their reasoning and said, this is what we feel would be better, I don't know. Kind of bothers me that we pay them, and then we don't pay attention to them.
I agree. I think number one is my, my favorite of all.
And I'm, I'm not saying that because it's my favorite. I'm saying that because, like I said, we paid them for their expertise. And if that's their expertise, and they say that it would be a better option to work with, I think it should be considered.
Well, they have the experience and the know-how and the...
And they're, they're choosing it to go along with the rest of the theme that they're working towards. I just feel like we need to listen to that expertise. That, that, I don't vote, and that's just my opinion. So you can end up doing whatever you want to do.
The best, I mean, I, after this happened, I talked to quite a few people. I said, okay, here, look at them, you know. And Denise Lake looked at them, and she said, well, Alex, you know, number two is SAC City. But number one is maybe more eye-catching, and maybe the better logo. She says, I like number two. I love the design of it. But number one, she thought was, was more effective. And I think we're maybe talking two things. One, what we like, as, if we're talking about an artwork, I like number two a lot, you know. Number one, I think maybe pops a little more, you know. But that, um, I, I would be happy with either one. I'll be honest, my bigger concern is not which one we choose, but how we get people to use the darn thing once we've paid 20,000 for it.
I think it needs to be eye-popping. And, and I think when you look at them, that's probably what they were talking about, is which one is cleaner. Which one catches your eye, and is a cleaner design?
I can't really say anything. I apparently have no sense of style, because I liked option three.
That does disappoint.
I figure I have no, no voice.
Me neither. I don't, I, I just think we need to make a decision and move forward.
You know, we, we, we asked Chambers input, you know, and they gave it to us. And then we're going to turn around and go with our way anyway. And, you know, I...
Not necessarily. We're going with the people of Blue Space way.
That's their recommendation.
Yeah, but I guess, I guess in some ways, what we're doing is letting Blue Space be the tie, the tiebreaker.
Right.
I mean, I don't know. I, I mean, what we, I believe the motion that we passed last time was to endorse number one pending approval of Chamber.
So we're back to square one.
Input with Chamber, yeah.
What did the, what did the minutes say?
Close enough. That was the intent. The intent was...
I just ask you to make a decision.
I would make a recommendation that we have logo number one.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to choose option number one. Is there any further discussion? And if not, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
No.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Item number seven, miscellaneous, A, is the second reading of ordinance number 2015-263 entitled, in ordinance amending the code. Um, can I back up just for a second?
Sure.
Can you inform the Chamber that you took into consideration Blue Space expertise on our decision, and it was not any personal thing or anything like that?
I'll be happy to talk to Bobby.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll move on to number seven. A, miscellaneous, A, second reading of ordinance number 2015-263 entitled, in ordinance amending the code of ordinances is of the City of Sack City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to collection of solid waste. Do you have any discussion or questions regarding that?
I would move passage of the second reading of ordinance number two fifteen dash two sixty-three.
And I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to confirm the second reading of ordinance number 2015 dash two sixty-three entitled In Ordnance, Amending the Code of Ordinance of the City of Sack City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to collection of solid waste. Do there any additional questions or comments?
Have we had any?
Have you had anything from anybody?
Oh, I had a question or two about, um, about what was going on, and I explained to them what was going on with the landfill commission, and then they under- I mean, I haven't had anybody who, after hearing what the situation is, doesn't understand what's going on.
Anything else?
Not that it's really germane to this ordinance, but are we, how are we dealing with the rates of the non-residential?
Well, we're getting ready to do a, we are due for a new rate analysis. I don't want to say when we're going to do it because we, um, uh, we don't want to affect what people do. Um, but, uh, but at the same time, um, we are looking at what our tonnage is on that side to reflect what changes need to be made, because on our, on our commercial side, ninety-five percent of our cost on the commercial side is tonnage, is the rate out of the sewer plant, or the landfill commission, sorry.
Okay, I would ask for a vote.
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson?
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney?
Yes.
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven miscellaneous B, consideration of approving specifications and going out for bids for facility lighting.
Um, you might have seen within your memo, I gave you some information pertaining to this issue. Um, just to go real briefly over what I surmised out of it after receiving the report on what the cost and the reimbursements and the break-even points were. Uh, my recommendation to the council at this time would be, um, would be that we, uh, hold off on doing this as it's not built, currently built into the budget. Um, and that we look potentially at maybe adjusting, um, our options next year to potentially do this in the, the facilities operated by the gas fund and the water fund. But I can't really give you a recommendation on when we would potentially proceed with, uh, facilities that are currently, uh, funded by the sanitary sewer fund or the general fund, which in those cases, you'd be talking about the library and the sewer plant. The water plant would, of course, be the water department, and this facility is actually owned by the gas utility, so.
Then, um, you're asking for us to strike it?
Correct. At this time, my recommendation is, is that we, we, we delay in proceeding on this at this time.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. Um, then we move to seven miscellaneous C, consideration of ProLiant discharge request.
Oh, I received a phone call last Thursday, so there hasn't been a lot of time to review this issue. But last Thursday, I received a phone call from a representative of ProLiant who was explaining to me that they've ran them, they have a situation they're trying to resolve. Um, prior to the freeze this winter, they were unable to get the lagoon that they currently operate for the facility down to a reasonable level, and they're concerned that as spring comes, that they will overflow their lagoon. They have made some tentative arrangements to sup- to, uh, to haul this material, um, this winter up to Cherokee to discharge some of the material and therefore get them down back under a safe level. Um, they asked us if we would consider the potential of doing this because, of course, they're looking at their opportunity to save on freight charges. Um, I presented, uh, to our sanitary sewer plant on Friday morning a copy of the test analysis for the material samples that had been taking of, taken of the material. Um, after talking with DNR and talking amongst themselves, uh, Monday afternoon, the recommendation was handed down to me, uh, by them that, um, they were, there was concern that we would violate our permit in at least two areas if we allowed them to proceed with, um, if we allowed them to dump the material at our facility. Um, so, uh, you might see what their intent was, is one tanker a day, which would be six thousand gallons a day. This would equate roughly, uh, to sixty to seventy dollars, seventy-five dollars a day is what they'd be paying to unload it. Um, so you, so if that gives you an indication, there are, further than that, their recommendation on the plan is they didn't think that the financial return on investment for us was, um, offset the risk to violate our permit. So I have to ask the council, do you want me to proceed forward with discussing with ProLiant the potential of us providing this service? They want to set up an agreement rela- on a relatively quick basis here. And, um, do you, with that recommendation, my question is, is do you want me to proceed forward? Or do you not want me to proceed forward? We're trying to make an arrangement with them.
Did anyone have direct contact with DNR regarding this?
Yes.
And they said it would violate?
Oh, they didn't say for sure. Of course, they're not going to give you any written guarantees of anything of that nature. But based upon what our average daily numbers were-
You said borderline, huh?
There, there was concern, yes.
What would be the consequences if we did exceed it?
Well, uh, they wouldn't, uh, I can only speculate on that bill. However, I would say in that case that DNR's position would be is that we're knowingly putting ourselves at risk.
Well, how Storm Lake, I was like, because they're going from a lagoon to a lagoon?
Cherokee.
To Cherokee was it?
Cherokee. Well, well, I would say that that probably has something to do with it, and also the fact that, of course, six thousand gallons a day to us is much different than six thousand gallons a day to Cherokee.
And Cherokee had, had a Tyson plant up there, which has since closed. So they probably had the capacity to handle quite a bit.
I mean, I'll be the first one to say, I, I really wanted this to work. A revenue opportunity for us, a way to be a good partner with a large community or a large county business. But, um, so I'm just as disappointed as anyone else to hear what the results of the review were. But, um, I, I, so I'm just asking the council if they would like me to proceed or if they would, or if they have other recommendation too.
How many days we would have? You know, sixty dollars per day?
If we could start with one tanker per day, that would allow us to reduce our flow by ten percent per day at six thousand gallons. If we could start in February, after you have looked at the information, we would normally start applying when the frost is out of the temperatures at night. Uh, so we anticipate the end of March, first of April. So they'd be talking about doing this for a four to six week period of time on a daily basis.
So thirty-five days, type of sixty bucks. Not a high payoff for a risk.
No.
I mean, just thinking out of the box, is there any way that, I mean, if we were to take one, uh, one, one tanker a week, it might save them some, I mean, is it over a period of time, or would it be the aggregate amount that, aggregate is probably the wrong word, I mean?
There, there's two tests, and I did not, uh, I did not ask further questions to our, our sewer part, plant. Um, there is a daily limit, and there is a monthly average limit, uh, most of the chemicals that they have at the facility. Um, I, I would, I would have to ask them whether or not their concern was over the daily limit amounts or if it was over the monthly average limits.
I mean, if it were the monthly average limits, if it was a problem, then we could take one or two loads a week.
It would help them, yeah.
It would help them. It would, we could make a good faith offer of saying, we would like, we really want to work together with you.
It'd save them some on end.
And, you know.
It wouldn't be lucrative, but it would be more like neighbor helping neighbor, and it might, you know.
I mean, is it going to, is it going to get our sewer plant's financial status where we want it? No. But I mean, I would really like to see us be able to work with them. If it's a daily issue, it's a moot point. If it's a monthly issue, I would really like to see us pursue something that allowed us to do at least a portion thereof. If they, and they may not be interested in doing that, I don't know. But I mean-
Or, or, or do it for a period of time and monitor it and get some input from the DNR. Okay, here's what's going on. You know, the easy way out is, like, no.
Well, I would be happy if the council would direct me to, um, if it is a average limit issue, to proceed forward with pursuing a, a limited arrangement with them.
I think that would be a really good idea.
I would move to direct a city administrator to pursue an agreement with ProLiant if the concern is not the daily but the monthly issue and deal with something, work out an agreement that would be, help us be a good neighbor and also be acceptable to our, to minimizing our risk with the DNR.
Or, and if possible, calculate the amount that we could handle that may not put us over that limit.
Right.
And to monitor us-
And we don't have to come back to another council meeting. They're just telling you to move forward with it if it's an acceptable amount.
Do it, sure.
According to the sewer plant and the DNR.
And, and to monitor as we go.
Yeah.
Sure.
And if we run into a problem, they have to be aware that we're going to cease immediately if a problem is discovered because of this dumping.
Which is, that, that's very similar to what we do in the case of the Leach Eight with the landfill commission.
Okay.
Okay, um, would you like to repeat your motion? I think the motion has been made.
I would, I would, I would move that Adam be directed to pursue a relationship with ProLiant if it's a monthly limit we're concerned about, to do it on a basis that would make it feasible to be with DNR and minimize our risk of overshooting our goals and monitoring that.
As we go.
As we go.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made and seconded to direct Adam to work with ProLiant and our sewer plant and the DNR to work out an acceptable agreement, if possible, that would not put us at risk and allow us to monitor it as we go.
Boy, pretty good, Barry.
Are there any additional questions or comments? If not, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson?
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney?
Yes.
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we will move to committee and department head reports.
I guess I just had one question in the, in the library's monthly report. She says bookbox project. The library sent out twenty-one letters of interest to various businesses. Only two have requested bookbox placement. What, what is bookbox?
Uh, this is a program being encouraged, and this is where having a wife in the field actually works to my benefit.
Thank you.
This is a, uh, this is something that's being practiced throughout libraries throughout the state, where they will take, uh, books that, um, aren't high-volume books, and they will, that, they will set them for, um, remote checkout locations, so you can take them, use them, bring them back, replace them, uh, on kind of an honor program. Understand, we're talking about paperback books. We're talking about books that are likely sitting there waiting to go through the sale rack, um, in the back that are being cycled out. Um, but that way, you take it to the people more than they have to come to the library to get encouraged to read more.
I'm glad you talked about that, because I got a lot of- I would be, I would accept that.
I have to hear it at home.
You get to hear it.
Anything else?
I have something for council forum.
Okay, then we will move on to A, council forum.
Uh, today, I, uh, I spent the day down at Des Moines for, uh, League Day. And if you haven't already heard, the first message we received this morning was that there was a vote, uh, passed in both the House and the Senate to approve an increase in the gas tax. Um, it would go effective, um, the month after the governor signs it. He has indicated his willingness to sign it, so sometime in the next month or two, um, the, uh, increased gas tax will go into place. They didn't give us all the details. They just communicated to us that that occurred today. Um, the Senate also passed an increase in minimum wage, but the expectation was is that it had, didn't have a chance in the House. Um, so, of course, that's always a concern for our friends at Kids World, uh, what that will do to them if the, uh, if the minimum wage changes, and of course, can also affect, uh, other small businesses.
So the, so the gas tax did pass the House, right?
It ha- it passed both the House and the Senate. So it is now on the governor's desk for signing.
Last I heard, it was just in the Senate. I hadn't realized it passed the House.
Um, the, um, there is growing concern. However, I will tell you that the legislature today, everyone I talked to stays committed to saying the same thing, that it's not going to happen this year. But there is growing concern that the gap of funding desired in education is becoming a compelling interest that's making the legislature reconsider their commitment to backfilling of commercial and industrial property taxes. So, um, I don't expect, nor did anyone we talked to today expect, that that would have an impact this year. But, um, it is a sign of things that we've all expected from day one, um, our potential to come.
That's purely reflective of the gutless wonders that they are.
The, um-
How do you really feel?
There's some other issues going on that are of interest to the league that were being discussed quite a bit. However, many of them pertain more to your university's communities or to your, uh, larger communities. There was some home role discussion issues going on, and for those that might not know what the home role issue is, is in the state of Iowa, the cities, um, have the right to set their own roles under home role, subject to limitations. And so there's always this gray area about how far does home role go and how far can the state infringe upon home role rights? And so there's consistently issues that come up that pertain to that. But there's nothing new coming down for, to us on TIF, which has been a typical area of interest over the last few years. Um, there is talk about offering some new programs for economic development purposes, which, um, um, and for, uh, dealing with, um, abandoned and dilapidated properties. Both of those are still in the committee stage, and it's not sure whether or not, I don't have de- a lot of detail to give you there because it will change quite a bit between now and then. But, uh, those were the main messages that I take home from today's meetings.
I'm just looking over the police beat. I looked at it earlier today, and I'm, one thing really struck me. Ten sex offender registers. Is that in thirty days?
They're moving in. I mean, when they come in, they're required to register.
Wow.
Are they required when they move, too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Some, some of them might have been people already living in the community that moved from one place to another, but, yes.
Good they have the restrictions of living within so far of a daycare center or school.
And I, I looked at this other one, suspicious, suspicious vehicle today. I was driving back to my office, and there was a black car that had pulled into Farburn Ottoman. And there's this big green, is it a telephone box or is it an electrical box? I don't know. Sitting out in front, electrical? And these two individuals had their cell phones out, and they were holding them up to this box and taking pictures of whatever. What would, what in the world would they be doing?
Um, we have, uh, that same box in our backyard, and it's geocaching people, I think.
Okay.
But, you know, because they're, because it used to be across the street, they'd stop at the stop sign. And then the other day, well, it's been maybe three months ago, they came over and that, and they go tromping through your yard. They're not a fairy.
Well, that, that looked very strange to me. I just was a little bit concerned about what they would be doing there. You hear all this thing about- You hear all this thing about what they can do with their phones these days, and it's pretty amazing what they can do, so, okay.
I guess a brief update on the Hometown Pride Program. I, we do have two quite viable candidates for the community coach. We'll be interviewing on March 5th. And it seems that the county committee is functioning really pretty well. And we are beginning to put together a Sac City committee. It doesn't have to be people inside the city limits. It can be people that are, have a vested interest in Sac City. But it would be nice to get a group of five tonight together. I've been trying to promote it. But any, any ideas you have or anybody who wants to be on it, that would be awesome.
Oh, the other thing I'll add is that Thursday morning, early, I have a meeting with the incoming county engineer. And one of the things that we were going to discuss, why I'm working with Ron to some degree on this group coming over from Fort Dodge, I am going to talk a little bit with the incoming county engineer about the potential for South Fifth Street.
The supervisors have indicated great interest in helping us with South Fifth Street. And while they're interested, it seems the time to jump on it.
And for any of you who have not heard, the new county engineer is, will be Zach from INS. He was our lead on the overlay project in town.
Nothing was said during this, but I would just like to speak up and say, I think Taylor Steinkamp was a good employee while he was here.
Excellent.
I believe that he did a good job, and I'm sorry to see him leave. But we wish him well. Is there anything else for the good of the cause?
Let's see, for the roof of this building here, we don't have that in this year's capital plan, do we?
Yes, we do.
You do, okay.
How? This fiscal year or next?
I believe it's in this fiscal year. In fact, it was actually originally in last fiscal year.
It's in this one.
Yeah. So-
Do we need to be going out for bids?
It is in the works. It takes a little bit longer to put that together because just to give you kind of the indication, our plan, our proposal to the council is going to be moving away from a flat roof, to put a slant to the roof. So that it will create, well, and that's being based on cost to some degree as we work through estimates.
So we're looking at what, slanted with steel?
Most likely, yes.
That would be good. In Iowa, you'd never have to worry about shingles again.
Yeah. I think that's the way to go.
Is there anything else for the good of the cause?
I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded to adjourn. Please call for a vote.
Councilperson Perry?
Perry says yeah.
Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Councilperson Brenney?
Yes.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.